Thank you. All right, it is now 10:00 a.m. We will call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, December 20th. If you would please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. At this time, we will accept any public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will accept them as each item is under consideration. Any additions to the agenda? I don't think we have any, but just to double check. All right, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting held on December 13th, 2022?
Motion to approve the minutes for the meeting held on December 13th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any changes needed to the minutes, additions, corrections? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Okay. All right, we wanted to kick off our meeting today with a special recognition. We're going to welcome up Krista Davis, at this time, our Chief Risk Officer and Director of Workplace Operations, who won a prestigious award at the latest County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania conference, our Fall Conference. And it is the Ron Shearer PCOR Award for Outstanding Service as a Board Member during this past year in 2022. PCOR does a lot of our insurance programs. Krista works very closely with them, has worked with them for many years now, and truly, we wanted to recognize you for this. This is really special. We, as Center County, from an appointee standpoint, have never garnered this, at least in recent memory. And so, this is special. We really appreciate it. And we also have a larger award for the county. And so, we might want to turn that over to you at this time, Krista. So, again, thank you and congratulations for your award, but broadly speaking, all of our employees have a little bit of pride to taking this next award.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. And thanks for just making the time this morning to even bring this to light. I appreciate your recognition. So, as the Center County won a Loss Prevention Award from PCOR, our insurance company this year, which means that we went to 12 events. We tied with Juniata County, actually another member in the program. We went to 12 events, and those trainings include anything from defensive driving, the prison risk management workshop, the County Risk Manager Workshop, the Excellence Supervisor Seminars. Those all are trainings that PCOR offers, and then they measure who's coming and who's enhancing their safety and their leadership skills, and that's why we won the award. We sent a total of 42, 44 people this year, which was, I thought, pretty impressive. So, we just are continuing to learn and grow. And another comment about the Ron Shearer Award, I just wanted to add in, is that is my fourth term as a board member with PCOR. And the board oversees the insurances, of course, the underwriting and claims matters for our 58 members. And my colleagues on the board are either commissioners or solicitors, so I'm the only risk manager. So, I'm honored to be at the table representing Center County there. So, that is about all that I have to say about that, and just was surprised as anybody about that, winning that award that evening, but I thank you again for your allowing me to go and attend those meetings.
Again, I don't think we would have, I think we all agree that we wouldn't have won the larger county award if we didn't have a tremendous risk management individual here that really is looking out for us. And those 44 employees, throughout their time here, their futures will hopefully be safer with workplace operations, so it really makes a difference. So, absolutely, yeah. And I think we have another light to shine on, another PCOR award as well.
Well, actually, you guys were at the meeting where they did this, and that is, PCOR gave the Center County's Youth Center their Loss Experience Award. So, now, the Youth Center is a regional award in that it's the five contiguous counties to Center County. That would be Mifflin, Clinton, Huntington, who am I missing?
Clearfield.
Clearfield, yes, and Center County. And that's, so, our region came through pretty well this year. But I want to thank you for everything you do for Center County. And obviously, the loss prevention part of it, the training is important, as is just about everything that keeps us pretty much running on all eight cylinders. That's fantastic, and thank you.
Thank you for having the fortitude to serve on the board where absolutely everyone else is either a county commissioner or a solicitor.
Yes.
You gotta be wrong.
Yeah, they're lively meetings.
Absolutely, absolutely.
PCOR has been amazing to us, though, in the past, and they've represented us well and protected our back when we needed it. Just give them all our best, so thank you.
Yes, great organization. Thank you.
And we do have on the agenda later, we wanted to let this percolate a little bit until later in the agenda, but consideration of a renomination for yours truly. So, we will consider that with, you know, really, we'll ponder it before then.
All right.
But it does sound like you are willing and interested and excited to serve another term.
Most definitely, yes, thank you.
Fantastic. And you're going to clear the field. I don't think there's going to be any nominations for fourth or fifth class counties, so.
I want to rule it out.
Yeah. No, we'll make some calls.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
But we did want to, again, recognize you and the rest of the county for receiving these prestigious awards. So, congratulations, Krista. Thank you so much, absolutely. And then we're going to lead right into a contract renewal. So, we'll keep it with you for the time being, yeah.
Yes, so here we go. We've got actually three contracts to review with you. The first is our cleaning contract. So, we contract with someone, a vendor, not an employee. She's self-employed. Her name is Jamie Praskovich, and she cleans four of our Magisterial District Justice Offices. So, the contract total for this next year is $19,240 for her cleaning, and it will last from January 1 to December 31 of 2023.
Thank you, Krista. Any questions? We look for a motion.
Motion to add the contract with Jamie Praskovich to next week's consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Okay. And then we have two other renewals.
Yes, so down in Center Hall where our MDJ office is located, they are needing lawn maintenance and snow removal maintenance. So, those two contracts are before you. The first is for Craig Homan to provide lawn maintenance services for Center Hall. And the contract, although we don't have a specific amount because we're not sure how many cuts we'll have next year, but the contract amount won't exceed $1,560 for the period of January 1, 2023 to December 31. And then I can move on for, okay. And then moving on to the colder months. This would be starting January 1, 2023, to December 1, 2023, continued snow removal services with Murphy's Outdoor Maintenance. Again, we're not sure of the total amount, but the contract total is not to exceed $3,500 for the period.
Thank you, Krista. Any questions or comments? All right, we'll look for a motion.
Motion to add the Magisterial District Justice Center Hall items to next week's consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Thank you, Krista, very much.
Thank you.
For this next item, I think all of us are going to put our two cents in for this next item, but we just want to highlight and raise up the need for Center County to be proactive when it comes to the broadband maps that were released by the FCC, and the deadline is fast approaching. And we just wanted to each take an opportunity to really encourage all of our residents to review the map, and this is really a part that they can play in helping to close the digital divide. And the more accurate maps we have here in Center County, the better funding, and more fair allocation we can get from the federal government. And we just want to make sure, again, everybody has access from an education standpoint, work, healthcare, public safety, you name it. So, we just want to raise that up, and we know that all of us have been very interested in this. This is a priority for us, broadband throughout the county, faster speeds throughout the county for everyone. And so, I'll close my comments there and turn it over to Commissioner Higgins for any further comments.
Thanks, Mike. The new deadline, which I'm hoping is, am I the one covering it in the meeting here?
Oh, no, please, yeah, please, please, yeah.
I believe it's January, help me in the back there.
13.
13, yes. I think that's, is that a Friday as well?
Yes.
Okay, so Friday, January 13th is the deadline, which, as some of you are noticing, that's just a couple weeks away. This updated map is going to determine the funding, not just for Pennsylvania, but for Center County and for your house, or your residence, or your small business. Broadband is kind of the new utility. It's, for a lot of people, it's right up there with water, sewer, and electric. If your broadband goes down, as does happen occasionally, people tend to freak out. Well, imagine if you didn't have broadband at all, which is the case for thousands of families here in Center County. I did go on the website. I am in the Borough of State College, about seven blocks, eight blocks off of downtown, and I am underserved according to the federal requirements. So, I went on to see what these major telecom companies say I'm receiving. They said I'm receiving speeds 10 times faster, 10 times faster than what I actually get. And I think I'm on their second highest tier. So.
You're still underserved.
I'm still underserved, because the maps are a fantasy. They've been a fantasy for decades. And I noticed the people in the back complaining are smiling at this because it's true. So, you need to go to the government website. It took me five minutes. The only hard part is there's these little teeny tiny boxes that say, "I grant you permission to utilize my data." So, make sure you check those, really, I mean, they're tiny, those teeny tiny boxes. But if you do that, the entire process is five minutes, and as long as you do it by Friday the 13th of January, you will be able to help yourself, help your community, help the county, and help the state receive a fair amount of funding. And hopefully, some of that funding will end up assisting you at your residence or small business. Thanks.
I actually would like to hear from Liz, and her team, who.
Please join us.
That sounds good to me, Steve.
Yeah, please, please.
I mean, they're the experts on this. I mean, we can cover the baseline items here, but, yeah, have a seat.
Doesn't cost any more to sit that.
That's right.
Yes.
Yeah, have a seat.
Yeah, thank you.
Tell us what, tell us.
Steve hasn't been to anybody in a long time.
Yeah, no.
That's right. Tell us what we can do to actually make a difference here.
We're asking you, please, answer the survey. Get onto the FCC broadband map. As Commissioner Higgins says, it takes five minutes. Peter had prepared on our website, if you go to the news and announcements, he put up a step-by-step guide, a video. If you have any questions, please refer to that, you know, video and guide first. If nothing else, please, please call. You can call up to the planning office. We have the broadband, centercountypa.gov website set up, as well as the email. I can't speak for Peter, I'll speak for myself. I'm still disappointed in the mapping, and it's obvious that the providers are still overreaching what they say they provide. From our perspective, well, yeah, I mean, we laugh at, we laugh about it, but it really is a serious situation for the funding. So, we do encourage you to get on. There was a couple things with the map, though, that I always forget, a couple old pointers.
Yes, so when you go onto the map website, and you're attempting to both locate yourself and decide, are you served, are you underserved, there is a small gear-like icon that you have to click on to discern what you're seeing, because at first, it will try to give you every single method of internet, cellular tower, satellite, cable, fiber optic, and you'll get a very wide range of what it says you can have, typically, not everywhere. You have to make sure to put cable or fiber optic cable, because that's ultimately what's going to decide our ability to get funding for your location. You might be served by Starlink, you might be served by other methods, but that will not affect our ability to get the funding. So, we just ask that you please, please do that. We have, I can agree with Liz that it could be better on the mapping side. It could, there are files that are available to us that could allow a large organization to better understand what's going on, but they've been presented to us in a manner that, both with the help of Nick upstairs in GIS and myself, we, for the life of us, cannot make this happen. I mean, we have spent hours now trying to find a way around some of these issues, and unfortunately, the method that they've released our data to us in is, in essence, unusable. We've crashed Excel, actually, on multiple occasions. So, we're trying our best, and we're just optimistic that something will change in the future. So, we appreciate your help.
We've got so many underserved areas, and truly underserved areas in our county, and if we do not help ourselves, i.e., people go out there and actually do this survey and actually go out there and check those boxes and make sure that we do all this, we are going to be stuck not only with continually poor service, but no financial capability of changing that in probably the long term either. So, we really need to look at this as individuals and look at it as a team effort, because if you ignore it, don't complain, because there's not going to be a thing that we or anybody else is probably going to be able to do for you. So, we've got to, if you are in one of those underserved areas, you've got to check the boxes, because even if they say, "Hey, you've got great internet, and you're out in the middle of nowhere, and you have nothing," you've got to make sure that the numbers are accurate. And unfortunately, the folks that make these maps overswing sometimes, I'll just say that, and it's not very accurate. So, I'm going to talk to my federal legislators and see what we can do to make sure that we provide some semblance of reality in these maps, because these really are going to be a game changer for education, for healthcare, for businesses. You know, I think in the middle of winter time, we know that if you cancel school, and you, you know, and they want to have some sort of virtual program at school, and the last thing that you have at school is no internet, then it really doesn't help you much. And that's where we are. And whether you're an entrepreneur, whether you're, you know, an EMS worker, we've got to provide basic internet service throughout our county, and the only way to do that is to have accurate maps so we know where the problems are that need fixed. And right now, it doesn't appear that there's much reality there. So, we've got to change that as individuals and individual families, because if you don't, it's not going to have a good outcome, so.
Right now, this is for residents of Center County. This is really, we're calling on you as your civic duty to really take some time to do this. It's not the perfect system, but it is so important for your home, your community, our county, that we get as much funding as possible. This really is the census. And when we talk about census and population, this is really the census for broadband, and it's a one-time opportunity. And the billions of dollars that are going to be coming down from the federal government that can enable us to expand in so many different parts of the county, really, we are asking you to take some time to do this. We know it's the holiday season, we appreciate that, but this is the one shot, the one opportunity. So, please, do your part to help your community with answering these few questions on this website. And we should probably give the website as well.
Yeah, the website would be helpful.
So, we make sure we have that. And it is broadband, it was FCC.broadband? Oh, boy.
Yeah, if you type in into a search engine FCC broadband map, it will bring up the main website.
And you have a link to it on our county webpage as well?
Yes.
Okay, so that's under the planning.
Yeah, yeah. And we just, we want to reiterate again, at the county level, you know, we're starting to coordinate more with Penn State Extension, and we can only dispute the location. So, if we go into the map and we see a lot of dots missing where there should be structures, that is something that we can challenge at the county level. But we cannot challenge at the individual residential level as to the quality or the reliability of the service. And that's where we really are asking the residents, you know, to step up and please answer the survey.
Would it be, I was looking this up from the County Commissioners Association newsletter, would that be like the HTTPS dot double forward slash the standard stuff, broadbandmap.fcc.gov forward slash home?
Yes.
Yeah, so, standard heading, HTTPS, and then broadbandmap, all as one word, dot FCC for Federal Communications Commission, dot gov forward slash home, and it pulls up right to what is your home address? I finally got the best results by putting in my postal address instead of the one I sometimes use, and the map popped right up, and it said, "You have the highest speed broadband available." I'm like, "That is a lie." So, go on and see what the FCC is telling you. There's a pretty good chance that whatever they're telling you is a fantasy.
Do we have a sense of how this thing got so screwed up, if you will? Why are we having a conversation about inaccuracy?
And as we alluded to, the data that's provided for much of this is, we're relying on the providers to provide that data. And unfortunately, because of many other, whatever interests they have, they're driven not to disclose that, and so, there's a frustration there. So, it's a lot of special interests, corporate interests, and, you know, at the end of the day, we're trying to break through that, so.
You would think that if you wanted to provide broadband service to the greatest number of people, that you would provide accurate data so we would know what areas to fix and not create some.
Major telecom companies have provided fantasies for decades, Steve, fantasies.
All I can tell you is, this is pretty important, because there's folks that are, that we've all been hammered over. I mean, what can we do? What can we do? Well, this is something we all can do, so.
I think this is, everybody's on board with this. NACO, CCAP, Corporate Extension, the Broadband Authority, planning offices around the country probably are really, really working on this. So, this is a priority for county government as we go into the new year again, February 13th. It probably will not be the last time we mention it around this table and really highlight this, so.
What's frightening to me is, and I don't mind calling a spade a spade here, if we're having this conversation now, and let's say everybody does do all this hard work, and they go through and they fill out these surveys, who listens to that anyways? That's why I think we need to make sure that somebody at the federal level is actually paying attention to the efforts that we think are pretty important. And it's not just dismissed as, well, you know, these other interests are going to outweigh us anyways, no matter what you say, but.
Well, much like with the census, we were talking about potentially putting some money behind advertising and just getting the word out there. And so, that's certainly something we could think about doing, you know, in the coming weeks, really trying to promote this, push it, get as much earned media as possible. Like, many of our, again, the media has really driven this. We had a town hall meeting at the State Theater that our former administrator, Margaret Gray, had participated in around broadband, and the Center Daily Times, and McClatchy hosted that. So, I think there'd be an interest in them getting the word out, too, so.
As commissioners, we, and planning office, we have done quite a bit here in Center County with a lot of different partners, the CBICC, state government, broad variety of municipalities, the school districts. And we do have maybe a couple thousand people who now have internet who didn't have internet in 2017. But there are still many thousands of residents in Center County and hundreds of thousands of residents in Pennsylvania that still don't have internet. There's no plans at this point for them to have internet from major telecom providers until we pull down our share of the roughly $42 billion of broadband funding that was in the American Rescue Plan. Unfortunately, it's never easy. You've got to spend that five minutes and go, "Oh, yeah, no, I'm not getting high-speed internet at my house. I'm going to, you know, inform the FCC that I would like better service or just any service at all."
We've already surveyed many people in Center County, and we have pretty good data, but once again, apparently, that doesn't matter. That, you know, that doesn't factor into this conversation. So, we have to basically stretch ourselves out as a community and make sure that we at least check those boxes and let people at the federal level will know where we are. But it, to me, this is just way too important of an issue. This is the same as rural electrification was in the 1930s, and this is the game changer for many households and people, not only being able to educate their children, but also, you know, businesses to operate. And I think, I hope the federal government takes this as seriously as they should, because this is just mildly frustrating, to say the least.
Well, until January 13th, it'll be a full court press. It'll be, you know, we'll be getting the word out, so.
I would support any effort that we can do to advertise the, including, I would suggest a press release.
Absolutely.
To our media partners to let them know the importance of this issue.
Absolutely. I agree. Full court press, we can develop that fully as we go forward, but any efforts.
And we may want a little summary of what Peter was saying about checking certain boxes so that it's recorded properly.
And can we, and can we ask if this could be a banner on our county webpage? So, when you click on it, this is one of the first things you see?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
That would be helpful.
Social media, are all of our social media accounts just really, just, yeah, promote?
We got a hammer.
Absolutely, yep, absolutely. Sounds good. Well, again, for our CNET audience, you'll be hearing it probably every meeting until now, until the December 13th, I'm sorry, January 13th deadline, something about this message. So, a great, great discussion. Thank you for your willingness to come up, Liz and Peter, appreciate that. And we'll go from there, so, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to call you up, sort of ad hoc, but.
And then, keeping with our planning theme, we have Ray and Koche with us to discuss our transportation projects and initiatives. Koche, yeah, absolutely, please, we welcome you up, yeah, absolutely.
You're not in the controller's office anymore.
No, 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 please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, good morning.
Yes, I'm pinch hitting for Koche, and this is week two, so she's getting a full education on transportation here. Our first item, we're asking Commissioners to consider approval of a time extension for Larson Design Group for Part II Preliminary Design under Agreement L 00529 for the County Bridge Replacement Bundle from January 22, 2023 to January 22, 2024. These two bridges include Mill Street replacement in Howard Borough and Railroad Street in Belfont Borough. The Part II tasks that remain, which should not take a full year, further coordination with utilities, finalization of right-of-way and DEP permitting, soil boring, and the development of foundation guidance, acquisition of right-of-way, advertising the project for bidding, opening the bids, assisting in awarding the contractor, and then notice to proceed. So, there are still some items that remain under preliminary design.
We do want, again, for our CNET audience, this would be the first bridge bundle. Correct, Ray, this is our second one that we're about to go.
Yeah, this will be the second bridge bundle. These are the replacements.
Great, okay. Belfont, or no, this is Belfont, which ones are these?
Railroad Street in Belfont Borough, and then Mill Street in Howard Borough.
Any questions or comments?
Ray, just a concern. I know these are very complex projects. They're very expensive bridges. I think the Railroad Street Bridge was at least a half a million, and that was pre-COVID. The other one, I think, was even more. We're going to hopefully get this all done before 2024?
I believe so, Commissioner. I know with our first part, with the repair projects with those three, we've had a pre-job conference with Hobaker, our contractor. So, we will be ready to go on those first three here, turn into 2023. So, this is the next phase, the replacements. So, we should be seeing some movement on those early in the first quarter of the year.
I think that Railroad Street Bridge is, in Belfont, is almost exactly 100 years old, and it's the only way in and out of the Sunnyside neighborhood. And it's not just the dozen or so houses back there, but it's also the Mach 1 kayaking access, and I believe there's also a Cedar Cog rail facility in that area, too, so.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because we just did receive the preliminary right-of-way plans for both of these bridges, which you'll be seeing on a future agenda for approval. And I believe between both of them, we probably have about at least nine or 10 property owners within those right-of-way areas for both. So, yes, it's very complex with Cedar Cog having rail and then private property in and around those bridges.
Yeah. My concern is getting this taken care of and underway before January 22 of 2024.
That's what we're shooting for, so definitely.
Well, it just, it may, I think November 26, 2024 will probably be the more likely date. In terms of.
2023.
For?
I'm looking at the upper one. I think we're still talking about the, either way.
Yeah, this first item just really covers Larson Design Group's activity under Part II for construction of their replacements. The next item I'll get into will be the overall grant that we received. It's an extension.
Well, why don't we head into that then?
Sure. We want the Commissioners to consider approval of a time extension for the multimodal Agreement O2E 067B for the Center County Bridge Replacement Bundle, which is set to expire in May 26 of '23. After we received a letter from PennDOT and Multimodal, they requested that we extend that to November 26, 2024. It is no later, the request is an extension to be filed no later than February 25 of '23, 90 days prior to the grant agreement. If you recall, this is the 2019-2020 Multimodal Fund Award of $2 Million. If you recall, this is the 2019-2020 multimodal fund award of $2,070,000 for the pro, this is the second part of the project. The commissioners approved the first extension on Part One back in July, and that's for the repair. And this is for the overall grant for both multimodal projects.
All right, thank you, Ray. And I think that was the one I was alluding to in terms of the, the final, final construction of the second phase would probably be a 2024 deadline, but, but appreciating the fact that you're talking about design of the, the bridges, absolutely. Early, early January of 2024 would be very likely, so, yeah.
Yeah, we set forth that November date because the bridges will essentially be done, and that leaves enough time to finalize any invoices, any inspections on the bridges. So that's why we set forth that sort of longer term of 18 months from the original drop-dead date.
That sounds good. Thank you, Ray. Any other questions or comments?
Yep.
All right, we'll look for a motion then.
Motion to approve the planning and community development items one and two.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried, okay? Thank you, Ray, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we will welcome up Chad for these next two items. Hi, Chad.
Good morning. I have two items, say, for consideration for approval. First one is with RBA Professional Data Systems for the IBM Informix database. This is the database that powers the GUI software that many departments around the county use. The cost is $36,856.40, and the license is for January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. And then the second item is with CDWG to add additional Microsoft Office 365 licenses. This will get us over the finish line with migrating all of the rest of the staff to Office 365, which we should have completed probably towards the end of the first quarter of next year. So this total will be $8,511.15, and then both these items are from the 2023 ITS budget.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Chad. Any comments or questions? Okay, we are seeing none. We'll look for a motion.
Motion to add the Information Technology Services items one and two to next week's consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Norm, how are you?
Good morning. A little congested here, so I apologize.
No, no worries, no worries.
Requesting approval of a contract with Mission Critical Partners for another annual Southern Alleghenese 911 Cooperative Regional Grant Project. This contract is for one year, a regional EZNet port monitoring in 2023, and six months of regional alley services until June of 2023. The EZNet monitoring project is $20,213.60 and $8,070 for regional alley for six months, with a total cost of $28,283.60. Along with this, we're tentative to go live with Pima's Next Generation Go Live, but if there'd be any delays going past June, there would be additional charge up to $8,070 to continue regional alley until the next gen 911 Go Live or the end of the year. This project's completely funded by Pima grant funds due to the regional cooperation, so.
All right, thank you, Norm. Any questions or comments on this contract? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to add the contract with Mission Critical Partners to next week's consent agenda.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Thanks, Norm.
Thank you.
All right, Kathy, we will welcome you up for this next item. Good morning.
Good morning. One agenda item this morning. We asked that the board consider renewing a contract with Quest Services to provide drug and alcohol services that include outpatient treatment, intensive outpatient treatment, case management, and medication assisted treatment. It is just a short contract as Quest Services has closed their offices effective November 30th of 2022. So the renewal period is just from July 1st through their closure date of November 30th, 2022. The contract total is $13,179, and the county portion of that is $544.
Thank you, Kathy. We appreciate all the work that Quest has done over the many years with us and look forward to working with other providers in that area. We would also like to say congratulations to you. This is your first meeting as our next, or now, Director or Administrator of Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention in Drug and Alcohol, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations, absolutely. All right, so we'll look for a, a motion to add the contracts to next week's consent agenda.
Motion to add the contract with Quest Services, Inc. to next week's consent agenda.
Seconded. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kathy.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Kathy. Okay, we'll turn it over to John.
Good morning. As alluded to at the beginning of the meeting, I'm here to suggest the nomination of Krista Davis, the Center County Chief Risk Officer, to serve on the P Corp Board of Directors as the fourth and fifth class county representative. This would be a two-year term, and Krista has stated her interest in continuing in that role. I know it's a tough decision, but.
And the background check came back okay, and.
That's right. Polygraph, okay. Okay, no, it'll.
I'm sure she wants to subject herself to that punishment.
Well, we, thank you again for your willingness to, Krista. I think you're, you'll get a unanimous vote from all the P Corp members, so we will look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the nomination of Krista Davis to the P Corp Board of Directors.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Again, thank you for your willingness to serve. All, you're welcome. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried, okay. All right, welcome up, Kristin. We have three approvals to consider. We'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you. I have three policies in front of you for approval. I gave you copies of all of them. The first is the Compensation Classification Administration Policy. The changes are highlighted on page three. This is the policy we've been working on and developing since completion of our classification and compensation study by Archer Group back in July. With the end of the year coming and the new process for performance evaluation scale movement, we had to address what would happen for those that are beyond the end of their scale. So that is included in here. And additionally, regarding COLAs, as our scale moves along, some of those people that may have been beyond the salary for their range, how they would then fall then onto the scale with any COLAs that may or may not be applied. So those are the two items that are updated within this policy. Do you want me to go through all of them or one by one?
We can pause to see if there's any questions for each one. Why don't we do that?
Okay.
Any comments or questions for this first one at this time? Okay, all right, we will go ahead, yeah.
All right, the second policy is our performance evaluation policy, which has been basically a total rewrite of our old policy based on the changes made, made and recommended in our classification and compensation study. This now states that those having a successful performance evaluation process will move a step along on the scale. This also gives guidance on probationary evals, what happens if someone does not successfully complete their evaluation, makes reference to our new system that we have. We have an online system for conducting performance evaluations and how any increases tied to evaluations will be applied based on the timeliness of when they are completed.
Any questions or comments on this policy? Hearing none, we will go to that third one.
Okay, the third policy is the leave of absence policy. The highlighted section on page five are the changes. We are addressing the fact that we have cases where both parents work for a county, and when a child is born, previously only one parent was eligible for parental leave. This change would allow for both parents to take parental leave and allow for an additional six weeks of medical leave to be run concurrently with the FMLA time so that both parents are able to utilize that six weeks of parental leave, but also does not extend beyond that 12 weeks of normal FMLA time that someone would be out. So that is the change and the wording included there on page five.
Thank you, Krista. Any comments or questions on this one?
And of course, it's contingent upon approval of their supervisor's.
Of course, right. The policy does state that any parental leave has to be scheduled in conjunction with their supervisor so as not to disrupt county business.
And again, birth, fostering, and also adoption, so covers those all. Okay, Krista, thank, Kristin, thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Any, any other just broad comments before we look for a motion to approve? Questions? Okay, we will look for that motion.
Motion to approve the Human Resources items one through three.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
We have our consent agenda in front of us. Is there any items we'd like to pull out before final approval? Okay, so, all right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for today?
Motion to approve this week's consent agenda.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is carried, okay. For one piece of old business, we will be joined by our Controller, Jason Moser, and we'll turn it over to you, Jason.
Sure, good morning. Thank you, commissioners, for having me here today. This is a motion, or I'm looking for a motion to table indefinitely the RFP for the Enterprise Resource Planning Software and Implementation Services. And I know sometimes the tabling indefinitely can ring a bell that something's stalling the process, and really, this is just to allow us flexibility in making the determination. We do still have some steps to move through in the process, including some potential follow-up demonstrations. We do still anticipate to make the decision within the month of January, but we weren't sure if it was going to be January 15th or January 30th, so this is just to give us that flexibility in the process.
That sounds good.
Great, yeah, we look forward to whenever that's ready to be pulled down from cloud indefinite and put back onto agenda. We'll, we'll look for your guidance on that, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there a motion to table indefinitely this item?
Motion to table indefinitely the request for proposal of the Enterprise Resource Planning Software and Implementation Services.
I will second that. Is that right?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jason. Okay, we have our check run for today.
Yes, we have a slightly larger-than-average check run of $1,730,663.6. I wanted to mention everyone here in the county supporting your local small businesses during the holiday season. Obviously, our local small businesses host or contribute to a broad variety of charity events for every charity you can think of in Center County. Maybe not so much the big box stores, especially the places like Amazon or eBay. So please, shop locally. It benefits your local economy. And for Julie and Lisa, I went through the check run and highlighted all of the small businesses that I could find, so don't think it's, don't pay those checks. Please pay those checks. But just this week, the Center County Government is cutting checks to at least 67 small businesses here in Center County. One of the larger checks is to Eagle Valley Personal Care Home, two checks totaling $73,293. Eagle Care, Eagle Valley and Eagle Care are close county partners, and we appreciate what the STEM family and all of their employees have done for all the residents of Center County, catering to their needs for a number of years with very high quality. So would like to make a motion to approve the check run dated December 16th.
I will second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the check run? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. The motion is carried, okay. John, anything to report at this time?
Just a brief update on the Center Crest project, just to let you know that the interior schematic design has been completed, and the architect is now focusing on the exterior envelope relative to windows and facade treatments that, that may be a part of the project. So within the next week or two, we'll, we will be having something to look at relative to the exterior envelope.
Sounds good. All right, thank you, John. All right, Commissioner, voter registration report.
We do have one this week, and it's actually a special one. We have a total registration in Center County of 99,927 voters, and that is down 7,549 voters because of the, the post-federal election purging that occurs this time of, this time of the season. So we just wanted to note that the numbers will be significantly lower than they normally are. The highlight reel, the Democratic Party has 42,143 registrations. The Green Party is 129. Libertarian Party is 611. No affiliation is 13,282, and the Republican Party has 40,642, leaving all others at 3,120. Of those 3,120, I'd like to find something a little Christmasy, want to wish everybody first a Merry Christmas. But I tried to find something Christmasy, and the closest I could come to was either the Green Party, the Halloween Party, or the Unity Party. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with Unity.
All right.
And the Unity Party has one registration this year and, or this time, and I would like to recognize them and wish everybody in the Unity Party a Merry Christmas as well. So I'd like to at least, again, recognize the fact that we did lose 7,549 registrations, and so those numbers will dramatically have changed.
Hopefully not your Pirate Party registration.
No, they're still, they're still.
They're still there?
They're still hanging in. There's still, a lot of the, the regular small party folks are still in there, so we're safe. The, the November general election changed a lot of the numbers for the precinct discussions that I normally have, and one of the things that we were talking about before the meeting is the incredibly high turnout we had in the, the general election in November 8th. And that's reflected almost statistically similar to the, the voter turnout of precinct 83, which is Walker East, in the, they vote at the Fire Hall in Hubersburg. The total registration is 1,206. There were 817 ballots cast, but that leads to a percentage voter, voter turnout of 67.74. And we were talking earlier how really, if you, if you do the numbers, it's, it comes out our voter registration with, with everything cleared up, it's about 66%. So if you, you know, very strong, actually above average a, a bit. We want to thank the fire company to, for letting us use their facility and just recognize the fact that there was a great voter turnout in Walker Township East, so.
Absolutely.
There you have it.
Okay.